Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, March twenty 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 five regular meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
May we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will have our mission statement will be read by Haley Harvey.
Hi Haley. Are you okay? Did she give you a screen? Okay, you got it.
The mission of the Trotwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum felicitated by an innovative and dedicated staff community, participation in state-of-the-art resources in a stimulating atmosphere.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey. Thank you. Next, I need a motion to adopt the agenda, but first, are there any changes?
Yes, I have two changes. The February financial reports were not added on the board agenda, so I would like to add them under six C, and that's under the treasurer's report, six C, for action. And there are three reports, the cash reconciliation report, the spending plan summary, and checks over a thousand dollars. And then the second item is, it's on your board agenda, community comments, but it was not on when we sent the board agenda out on Tuesday. So I just wanted to make sure that we were transparent on number two A on community comments.
And you said six C will be action?
Yes, for action, yes.
So I need a motion to adopt the agenda with the two changes with the community comments and six C and the treasurer.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda with those two changes.
I'll second.
Ms. Allen has been moved to second. Can you call the row, please?
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes to adopt the agenda with the changes. So item number two, do we have any community comments?
I do not have any comments. So there are none.
Moving right along to number three, presentations.
All right, thank you. We do have a couple of presentations this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Smith to come up. He may have not known that he was going to come up. This evening, we have two presentations to some outstanding athletes here in the district. Mr. Smith, the first presentation would be to Jamie Priest, and could you just give a little information with regards to Jamie? I know he's not here tonight.
So Jamie Priest won the sixty-meter dash at the indoor state in Division Two. His father decided to leave a day early for nationals, so he's headed to Virginia Beach just to beat some of the weather, and he will be running in the national finals this weekend. So Jamie did an exceptional job and represented our district well at indoor state track and came back as a champion. So we can give Jamie a round of applause, that'd be great.
And we'll try to get Jamie up here for the next meeting to give him his certificate. And B would be the recognition of the Ohio High School Athletic Association Division Three Boys Basketball District Champions and Regional Runner-Ups, the Trotwood Madison Running Rams. And Mr. Smith, if you don't mind introducing the coaches and let them introduce the young men.
Sure. So I'm going to ask Coach Blanton to come up, Coach Carl Blanton, Senior. I did see Coach Andre Yates, if he would come up. Coach Gary Akbar, I saw him. Coach Quentin Smith, and Coach Tony Duncan. Yes, I did see Coach Duncan. So if they would come up and then, we have a few young men, the District Fifteen Basketball Coaches Association kind of changed some dates with the All-Star game, so we have a couple of young men that are representing our district this evening, participating in the District Fifteen All-Star at Northridge, Coach?
Yes.
And so, but Coach Blanton, I'm going to have him introduce the players that are here this evening, so without further ado, Coach Blanton.
I got to see who's here. Chase Shoemake, Chase Shoemake is a junior. Damari is a freshman, Damari Williams. Quentin Petty is a freshman, and God, I can't think of his name. Kylan Tred, come on, is also a freshman. So we got a lot of upcoming freshmen and underclassmen to continue to represent Trotwood. We made a great run this year, didn't accomplish totally what we set out to do, but we're excited for where we came. So these are all of the guys and the coaches that contributed in helping us to be successful in this season, and these guys are upcoming as freshmen and juniors of our team. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Just real fast, our team did finish twenty-four and three, and the whole season, they were in the top ten in the state, and they did beat the number-one team in the state, which is Aiken during the regular season, who just so happens to be playing for a state championship tomorrow against Louisville. But these young men had a great season, and we do have a bright future, so I appreciate all the time and effort that Coach Blanton and his staff put in with our young people. So once again, we can give them another round of applause, please.
And on behalf of the administration, hold on, gentlemen, hold on, don't leave yet, young man.
Mr. Tree.
Mr. Tree, on behalf of, behalf of the Board of Education and the administration, we do have certificates that we'll give to Coach Blanton, and you can distribute to these, these to all of your young men. I think the board would probably like to take a picture with everybody who's here. Yeah, let's take a picture with everybody real quick.
Y'all all telling them us, so.
I think everybody's going to have to get behind in front. Mr. Lumpkin.
I'm standing in front of the girls.
Guys, come over here. Yeah, put all, Ms. Allen, you come up front, too.
I'm standing right here. I don't have it.
Coach Smith, you're the man.
Right in front of us. It's the one.
And if you didn't get a chance to see these young men play and our coaches coached, it was a, it was an outstanding season. That's an understatement with regards to, you know, what they did and how far they've come, and we're really excited about what the future holds for the basketball team. And that concludes presentations this evening. Madam President.
Okay, so now we're at number four, the consent agenda. And I need approval of February sixth, twenty twenty-five work session meeting minutes and February twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Also, I need approval of in lieu of transportation payments for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Item number C, approval for the J R O T C out-of-state overnight field trip from April the third through the sixth, twenty twenty-five, and J R O, J R O T C out-of-state overnight field trip to Columbus, Georgia, from April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-seven, I mean, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Also, approval of the Sinclair Community College, oh, you can't hear me, I'm sorry. The Sinclair, approval of the Sinclair Community College in Trotwood Madison City Schools College Credit Plus M O U and Payment Rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic school Approval of the resolution to adopt special education model policies and procedures with significant modifications. So I do need an approval for the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the consent agenda. Item number five is the board report. Item A, the board retreat. So our board retreat is scheduled for April the twelfth, twenty twenty-five, from eight a.m. to noon, here at the central office. Does anyone have any questions?
We're getting breakfast.
Yes, yes, we will. We'll make sure that's taken care of.
Okay.
Ms. Potter out there? Ms. Smith, you out there? It's called rich taste.
So, just to recap, the board retreat for twelve on a Saturday, twenty twenty-five, from eight a.m. to noon with breakfast. Okay, I was just trying to figure out what was intended. Item number B is our treasurer's, our treasurer's search. So through our extensive search process, the Board of Education has chosen to select Ms. Jill Adams as the next treasurer for our district. Pending completion of her licensure in May, Mrs. Adams will assume the role of treasurer August the first, twenty twenty-five. Jill will be working with Ms. Allen over the next several months to prepare herself for the new role with the district, and we look forward to her hitting the ground running in August. The Board of Education is excited for the district as Ms. Adams, excuse me, has shown dedication and commitment to Trotwood Madison City Schools and appears to be up for the challenge of keeping our district financially sound and stable through the next few years. So congratulations to Ms. Adams, and we know, we know that she will do well, and we will support her in her new role as the treasurer of CFO of Trotwood Madison City Schools, Ms. Jill Adams. If you will stand, and we will applaud you. Next item up, we will be rescheduling our April the third, twenty twenty-five work session meeting. And I guess the next meeting will be to be announced.
Actually, we're just going to cancel. It's canceled.
Okay, we're just going to cancel it, okay.
I'll just put everything, work session is canceled.
Okay, it's canceled. Do I need to tell them why?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Due to the board conference.
You definitely have a reason.
I'm sorry, do you have any questions and comments?
I do not.
Okay. Next up, item number six is the treasurer's report.
Yes, I have three items this evening to present. One is A, six A, B, and C. So the first one, in front of you, the green piece of paper. So every year, the Montgomery County sends to us a schedule of proposed amounts and rates for collection for the taxes, and this is for the tax year twenty-five slash twenty-six tax year. What I did on the green sheet of paper, I wanted you all to see that all the way to the right, if you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-two, twenty-three, it has the projected as an example, the projection for the general fund was eight point five million dollars. What we collected was nine million. For the permanent improvement, five hundred and one thousand, we collected five eighteen. So I guess I wanted to show that the projections are always less than what we collect, not by much, but I just wanted to give you a history of what the collections were. For twenty-four, twenty-five, I did not complete that because we're not finished with this school year yet, and then obviously, the twenty-five, twenty-six is what they're proposing, proposing. So they do want us, the board, to approve this, and they want it sent to the county by April the first. And so I would like action on this, on this evening so that we can fill out the resolution and send it to the county.
Are there any questions? I need a motion to approve the summary of the tax amounts and rates for the tax year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the approval.
The second item I had was the donation that the Trotwood Madison Education Foundation sent to us, and I just wanted the board to know it and also approve the donation of a thousand dollars toward a spring trip. And the spring trip was through Adrian Robinson, I'm not sure exactly where they're going, but so far, the T M E F has donated four thousand dollars to various activities in our district, so I wanted to make sure that the board knew about it and that the board would approve that donation.
That donation, I believe, is for her class, I can't remember exactly what the class is, Mr. McCray, what's Miss Robinson's class? Business, her business class, they're going to a conference at Cedar Point, and she requested a thousand-dollar donation.
Okay, thank you.
I need approval of the Trotwood Madison Education Foundation donation. Do we have any questions? No questions? Need a motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Ms. Allen, would you please call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the approval of the Education Foundation donation.
And the last item I had was walked in this evening for the financial reports for February. The first, FYI, we did have a finance committee meeting this evening, the committee members, Mrs. Simmons and Mrs. Carrington, and we had Mrs. Jill Smith to sit in on that meeting with us. And so we did go through, I think it's twenty-two reports, but three of those reports are asked for approval this evening. The first one is a cash reconciliation for February, and what it indicates, we have bank's bank balance of one million fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Our investment balances totaled twenty-four million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. We had outstanding vendor checks and adjustments, and that totaled one hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents, and that adjusts our bank balance to twenty-five million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, and that does match exactly to the meta, meta amount on the financial system. The second report actually comes off of the system, and it's for February, and it indicates your monthly actials and your year-to-date, your year-to-date actials from July of twenty twenty-four through February of twenty twenty-five. I always, I always call your attention to line six point oh-one at the bottom, and that's the excess revenue over expenses, or the other way around. So in our case, it's excessive or excess expenditures over revenue by one point two million dollars for the actual month, and then total fiscal year-to-date is almost four million dollars. And so that is the second report. And then the third report are all the checks that we cut in February over a thousand dollars, and they are listed numerically, and we did not have, we had two questions, but those questions were answered in the finance committee meeting, so there was no, no checks that I needed to bring to your attention this evening. And so I ask that the board approve those February financial reports, please.
I have a question about one of the accounts. Do you want me to ask you later?
Go ahead.
So I have a question about the scholarship account.
Uh-huh.
Could you ask them approximately, how much do we give students and scholarship money from this account?
So it depends, and so, so we have three endowments, if I can remember, Shell House, Lamedola, and another one, I can't remember off the top of my head. And so a lot of times, they give like seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. And then we have individuals like Mr. Pippin, I say Mr. Pippin, who owns Pippin Markets, his last name's not Pippin, but he gave us two thousand dollars last year and two thousand dollars the year before, and I think they, they decided to give two one-thousand-dollar scholarships. And so would you like to see those scholarships higher, Mrs. Cherry? I know Mrs. Hague, our counselor, she's over that scholarship process, and so.
I'm just saying the amount of money that's in the account versus the amount of money that is awarded to students, it just doesn't balance out.
And one thing about when you say endowment, those individuals that gave that money, they wanted that money to last for many, 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 many years. And so traditionally, since I've been there, it's been less than a thousand, but I am sure that if you, if you're expressing that concern, that they could, that they can increase that, that amount for scholarships. And, and you're basically the books and everything, so is there a recommendation that the scholarships at least be a thousand dollars? Would that be a recommendation from you guys? Or just a consensus?
What if somebody can't afford to give a thousand, but can afford to give five hundred?
It's probably here.
If someone directs a scholarship over five hundred dollars.
So, that's the thing.
So I think, I think if I hear you correctly, like Historical Society, they give five hundred dollars. And so if they give five hundred dollars, we would present that, but if there's money in those endowments, and we have the money to present a thousand-dollar scholarships, I think that, that recommendation could be taken into consideration.
I don't, I mean, why would we, what's the reasoning for one to do it at just a thousand dollars? Or having it as a minimum of a thousand? Is there some sort of bookkeeping reason that we would want to do that?
Not at all.
So why would we, I'm asking.
Yeah, I am, yeah, that's the same question she was asking, she wanted to know if it could be higher than what we were giving.
But I'm saying, like, to say that we should put a minimum on it, why, why would we do that?
Well, I'm asking because the amount, if you see the amount that's listed here versus how much we actually give out every year. That's why, I just asked.
Are there stipulations for the scholarships? I mean, I know there are requirements for the application.
Some requirements, but.
But as far as the dollar amount?
No, no, there is not, there is not.
So who determined, who did determine the dollar amount? Is that something that?
Yeah, we, I, I think it's historical.
Okay.
And that's how it was.
Just did it.
I mean, obviously, things can change. If you guys think even a thousand dollars is too small, fifteen hundred, you know what I'm saying?
We could probably discuss it at a later time, I was just asking.
Okay. And I could send Mrs. Hague an email to just say, please, you know, look at the dollar amounts, because things are, are going up. We could do that.
I do have a question. What, what do we pay Northmont City Schools eleven hundred and forty-four dollars for?
I have a question about one of the accounts, you want me to ask you later?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I have a question about the scholarship account.
Uh-huh.
Can you ask the proxy, how much do we give students in scholarship money from this account?
So it depends, and so, so we have three endowments, if I can remember, Shell House, La Madola, and another one, I can't remember off the top of my head. And so a lot of times, they give like seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. And then we have individuals like Mr. Pippin, I say Mr. Pippin, who owns Pippin Markets, his last name's not Pippin. But he gave us two thousand dollars last year and two thousand dollars the year before. And I think they, they decided to give two one thousand dollar scholarships. And so would you like to see those scholarships higher, Mrs. Cherry? I know Mrs. Hague, our counselor, she's over that scholarship process, and so...
I'm just saying the amount of money that's in the account versus the amount of money that is awarded to students, it just doesn't balance out.
And one thing about when you say endowment, those individuals that gave that money, they wanted that money to last for many, 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 many years. And so traditionally, since I've been there, it's been less than a thousand. But I am sure that if you, if you're expressing that concern, that they could, that they can increase that amount for scholarships. And you're basically the books and everything, so is there a recommendation that the scholarships at least be a thousand dollars? Would that be a recommendation from you guys? Or just a consensus?
If someone directs a scholarship over five hundred dollars?
So, that's the thing.
So I think, I think if I hear you correctly, like historical society, they give five hundred dollars. And so if they give five hundred dollars, we would present that. But if there's money in those endowments, and we have the money to present a thousand dollar scholarships, I think that, that recommendation could be taken into consideration. Okay.
I don't, I mean, why would we, what's the reasoning for one to do it at just a thousand dollars? Or having it as a minimum of a thousand? Is there some sort of bookkeeping reason that we would want to do that?
Not at all.
So why would we, I'm asking.
Yeah, I am, yeah, but that's the same question she was asking, she wanted to know if it could be higher than what we were giving.
But I'm saying like, to say that we should put a minimum on it, why, why would we do that?
Well, I'm asking because the amount, if you see the amount that's listed here versus how much we actually give out every year. That's why, I just asked.
Are there stipulations for the scholarships? I mean, I know there are requirements for the application.
Some requirements, but...
But as far as the dollar amount?
No, no, there is not, there is not.
So who determined, who did determine the dollar amount, is that something that...
Yeah, we, I, I think it's historical.
Okay.
And that's how it was.
Just did it.
I mean, obviously, things can change, if you guys think even a thousand dollars is too small, fifteen hundred, you know what I'm saying?
We could probably discuss it later, I was just asking.
Okay. And I could send Mrs. Hague an email to just say, please, you know, look at the dollar amounts because things are going up. We could do that.
I do have a question. What, what do we pay Northmont City Schools eleven hundred and forty-four dollars for?
I would have to pull that off the top of my head, I don't know, I don't know if it was a wrestling, I don't know. I'm looking at athletics, so...
It, it could likely, no, it could likely be a, a student placement. If, if we have a student that is, that is a resident of our district but is being educated, whether in a foster home or, or something to that extent, it could be that, we, we can actually, yeah, pull the actual...
What was the, what was the total on Mr. Lumpkin?
It's eleven forty-four sixty-seven.
Okay, I can pull that, I'm checking out, I will send you all an email on that, okay?
It could also be transportation costs too. School charges, is what you're saying, yeah. I just want to, I want to make sure Ms. Simmons hears that.
Is that different from what, in lieu of transportation payment?
No, if, if we have a student that is in our, that is in our district, but we have to transport them, Tracy is looking at me because we're making sure we're on the same page, but we have to transport them, we often have to pay them, or they have to pay us for transporting kids, we share the cost. Yeah, we share the cost, I'm trying to explain it as, as layman's as possible, because sometimes it can get a little complicated. But there's, there's that, that transportation money that comes with kids. And because we're working with each other, sometimes, a lot of times, most of the time, we split the cost down. Is that, alright.
Thank you, thank Mallory.
And there are districts that pay us too for, for some of these, some of these costs too. Okay, I got you. But Ms. Allen, you'll get that exact, yeah.
I need a motion. Okay, so, yeah, that got me, that got me off track a little bit. So, I do need a motion for the approval of, what was it?
Finance report.
For the finance report, I'm sorry.
Our motion.
My second.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
And who's second?
Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the finance report. Item number seven is the superintendent's report.
I only have one item for approval this evening, it is the personnel agenda. Personnel agenda was sent to you guys on Monday, I believe. There were a couple of questions for clarification, the first, the LPDC chair, LPDC stands for Local Professional Development Committee. And that is the group of staff members that work to approve staff that are renewing their, their professional licenses. They have to, staff that are renewing their licenses have to accumulate a certain amount of either professional development hours, course hours. And through the LPDC chairs and those other members of the committee, they approve the hours for renewal, and then that information is sent to the state of Ohio for the renewal of those licenses for staff members. The second question was with regards to flag football. There was a question about what was flag football, I'm gonna give Mr. Smith the floor for a few seconds just to kind of explain what's going on with flag football here in the district.
So our student athletes, the high school are starting basically playing this spring. They public school started flag football last year ago, it went over extremely well, so it is a league sport. So our, we have twenty-seven hundred people. And it's phenomenal, I see our football players out helping them and going over different covers and whatnot. They play six games over at Rosa Parks, week before last, I drove over to Rosa Parks and assessed the area, it rolled up and scattered the field. So all games we play at Rosa Parks, during the month, they go in there at the end and turn to the fair, big stadium.
Go Rams!
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other than that, I am asking for approval of the personnel agenda this evening.
Are there any questions? Okay, I need a motion, my motion.
My second.
Simmons. Oh, I'm sorry, I motion.
My second.
It's been moved to second, Ms. Allen, would you call the row?
Yes, Mrs. Carrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkin?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes, motion passes for the approval of the personnel agenda. Item number eight, discussion items.
The only discussion item we have on the agenda this evening is a athletic league update. And once again, this is Mr. Smith night tonight. Could you give us a brief overview?
So Mr. Howard and I attended a meeting two weeks ago, the state public school, Jefferson Council Public School, a very productive meeting. As I mentioned a couple meetings ago, I recommended a consultant who's often been in. Had a lot of institutional knowledge about all three districts and about sports history. And he is working on the constitution and bylaws that will take about two to three weeks to put together. And all three districts can come back together and go over those, go over the constitution and bylaws, and see what we want to tweak. And then we will post a position for commissioner. And all three districts will have, make sure, they get very clear to everyone that I wanted to make sure we had a voice in the state, as well as Jefferson Council, too, that commissioners may consider it, and for state public schools, too. And so I think that things will be like...
And for clarification, the, the consultant is not going to be the commissioner, he's just a consultant at this point. Right, okay.
And how are we paying for the consultant?
He's doing it for me.
Oh, oh. Oh, nice, nice, we appreciate it.
The consultant is, we can let him know, Eric Spar, yeah, go ahead.
Eric Spar is the commissioner of the chief law and the honor advocate.
But he, he's not gonna be the commissioner.
Anyone in a blocking position is willing to pay, because there's two of them.
And it's not solely our choice anyway, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you for that update. Are there any other questions? Number nine, transfer comments?
Yes, I actually wrote this down. I said, "The past couple of weeks have been very busy for me, I wasn't here last meeting, so I couldn't give praise to the ELC, Westbrook Village and Middle School for their wonderful black history programs. Hats off to Aretha Franklin, who lost her wig but kept singing as if nothing happened." There was just one, I think that was the middle, was that the, that was at Westbrook Village. I also want to acknowledge the Auditor of State, Keith Faber, Faber, for personally delivering the Ohio Auditor of State award to our district. And so those are the two things I just wanted to say. Okay, and one more, quick, and congratulations to Jill Smith. Jill, Jill Adams, Jimmy Smith, see, Jones, Jimmy Smith, Jill Adams. Okay. Next, the superintendent's report?
I do have just a, just a few comments this evening. The first, if you, again, make reference to your, your folder, I do have a couple documents to share with you. The first, I want to recognize Danielle Cossey, who is a teacher at Westbrook Village. She was elected the STEM Teacher of the Year through the Big Hoopla, which is the NCAA First Four organization. We got the information on Thursday, this past Thursday, that she was, she was awarded. So it was a little too late to get her here today, but I would like to bring her, and I talked to Ms. Harden, we're gonna try to bring her before the board next, our next meeting. With, with this recognition, what I provided is all of the requirements for the STEM Teacher of the Year. But she also was awarded forty, I believe forty tickets to the First Four game the other night. So we had several students and staff there that attended the game, all as a benefit of Mrs. Cossey's award. So I wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we do have a, another shining star here in our district in Mrs. Mrs. Cossey. The second item I have identified as B, Mr. Matthews, you got that picture? Our Army JROTC, accompanied, accompanied and led by Lieutenant Colonel Graves, Odell Graves, Dr. Graves, had the opportunity to attend the National Drone Competition in Fort, at Fort Benning, Georgia, over the first, I believe, the first weekend, second weekend, March. Our students did an outstanding job, received several awards. If you've never gotten an opportunity to attend one of those drone competitions, it's a, it's kind of like an obstacle course where the kids have to fly their drones through a variety of different obstacles and, and, and manage the, manage the drones and work together, and you got a navigator and a, and a copilot, it's, it's a really, really cool event. And our kids, again, did an outstanding job of representing Trotwood Madison High School very well. Hopefully, we can get them here in our next meeting as well, and they can kind of show you how the drones work. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware of our kids out there, once again, performing and showing out. Item C, I wanted to make the board aware that this past Wednesday, Trotwood Madison High School gave the ACT test to all juniors in, in the school. All juniors took the ACT test, I worked with Mr. McCray, and we decided this year that, and I, and I sent you guys an email, we, we decided this year that we wanted to make sure our kids, our juniors, had the best testing environment possible. We touched base with a couple of different school districts, a lot of school districts have been doing, doing this for years. They've had a, a asynchronous day for ninth, tenth, and twelfth grade students. And then they brought all juniors in and just only tested juniors, and juniors were the only kids in the building. We had a great testing environment, we had a great, the test was proctored by our own staff. And we believe that as we go forward, this is probably the best, the best way to do this with regards to creating a, a really solid and sound testing environment for, for the ACT versus some of the things we've done in the past, or what we've done in the past, where we just, we isolate juniors or we bring kids in late. This time, we emptied the building and we just had juniors in, in the building, and it went pretty well. Mr. McCray, would you, would you agree?
I totally agree.
Okay. How many juniors did we have test? About one sixty. And this is just the, this is just the communication that went home to parents. I, I shared this, we shared this via Parents Square, Mr. Mickey put this together. We let parents know upfront that this is an important, important opportunity for our kids. And this is why we sent, this is why we sent everybody home and tested our juniors on, on last, on this Wednesday. Right? And last, I have provided a, a document that I wanted to share with the board. And I, I, I want the board to get a little understanding of, I guess, what my role is with the Trotwood Chamber of Commerce. Sitting, sitting in this seat, apparently, I'm designated as a member of the chamber. And, and that's okay, because I really think it's beneficial to, to be a part of this, to be a part of this organization. So our, our last meeting, we, we had a, we had a really in-depth discussion about what the chamber does, who, who the chamber is, and, and what, what their goals are. And one of the members of the chamber provided a, a document, and this is the document identified as D in your packet, where it shows you all of the different wards, there are four wards in the city of Trotwood. Four wards that are designated based upon the amount of individuals that live in the ward. And then, of course, each one of those wards is assigned a council person. And then what we saw, what, what was presented to us, that if you look on the back, all of these listed, all of these, these names listed are businesses in specifically just Ward Two of the city of Trotwood. And then with these businesses, it shows whether or not they are actual members of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's, and it's denoted by CM, Chamber Member, in parentheses. So one of the, one of the challenges of the chamber is to recruit new businesses and to really make sure businesses within the city know and understand what the chamber is about. And work to develop partnerships and work to develop opportunities for growth. So we've been challenged as members of the chamber to reach out to each one of these businesses. We're gonna break these businesses up, and we're gonna go out, and we're gonna try to really encourage them to join the Chamber of Commerce and work to develop a, a really strong chamber within the city of Trotwood. So small businesses can thrive and proliferate in our, in our community. And it's also, you know, kind of prominent with, with the school district because there are a lot of opportunities for us to work with some of these businesses and contribute, and contribute to their, you know, to their, to their growth. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars of, on a lot of different things. One specifically being printing. A lot of people didn't know, we have, we have a printing business, a printing, a full-fledged printing business in the city of Trotwood, and it's copy and go. And she can do a lot of different things. She's, she printed this. And I, I think it's, it's very important for us as being the largest employer in the, in the city to make sure that we contribute to helping some of these other businesses. So we've been challenged. Yeah, we do, we do, we do, and, and that's a great point. We, we do got a lot of work to do because most of these businesses on here, on here, are not a part of the Chamber of Commerce. They're not members of the chamber. And we're, we're sitting and we're looking and we're reviewing this information, and we're asking ourselves, why are places like Autozone and Marathon and Dollar General, why are these large corporations not connected to the businesses and the business community in our city? So we are working to try to, to, to change that, and, and hopefully, we do our due diligence and that, and that, that comes to fruition. But also with that is a, is a copy of, of the membership benefits for the chamber. And we ask that if you know any of these local businesses, that you share this information with them and encourage them. And it's only, you know, if you look at the cost, you know, you're only talking about based upon the number of employees, we're talking about a hundred dollars or ninety-five dollars. And we're, we're really, we're really trying to get, get folks to understand that Trotwood does have its own chamber. And we're, we're trying to help, help these businesses survive, basically, in the city by providing them a lot of resources. Any questions about that? With that, on May ninth, Trotwood Madison City Schools will be sponsoring a chamber event, the annual Mother's Day brunch. I will make sure I provide information to, to all of the board members if you're interested in going. It's gonna be on May ninth, I don't have the exact time right now, but we are going to be sponsoring that event and working with the chamber. The chamber is a small group of dedicated folks, the executive board, and we're really trying to find some, some new and innovative strategies to, to help this, help this organization grow. And that's all I have.
I'm motion.
I second.
Ready to get up out of here.
Ready, Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mrs. Currenton?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
While she passes, please enter.
Seven forty-three.